Okay, we'll call it to order this September the 25th, 2019 meeting, the Franklin County Commission, roll call.
Commissioner Stottemeyer.
President.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
President.
Chair Howard.
President.
Vice Chair Dickinson.
President.
Commissioner Dunn.
President.
You'd all stand, join us in the pledge of allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Pastor Scott Dickinson of the Michigan Valley United Methodist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Let's pray. Lord, we're thankful today for all you do for us. Thank for a new member of the team, Derek had a little one, and we're grateful for that and a healthy one. So, Lord, just continue to watch over their family. We're thankful for the cooler weather that you've brought to us as we anticipate harvest time for beans and different things and the farmers out there doing their work. We're grateful for all that gets done. Continue to pray for our Commissioners and for our county and staff and all that they do, the work that they put in, and, Lord, continue to watch over them as they get those things done, the list that's there for them to get done. Pray for their families, pray for the citizens of our county, and, Lord, that everyone would just take care of each other, watch over each other. We are grateful that we live in a great place and that we have plenty of things here and it's a great place to live. So, just watch over us today, be with the Commissioners as they meet today, give them wisdom and guidance, we ask in your name. Amen.
Thanks Scott.
Okay, takes us to correspondence and organizational business. First item on that today will be a Prairie Paws update from Melissa.
I apologize, I'm fighting a summer cold, so if my voice goes in and out.
Yeah, can I put it on the screen?
Yeah, there's some numbers.
Do you want to get the lights?
Perfect. As you know, my name is Melissa Reed, I'm the Executive Director of Prairie Paws Animal Shelter, and I'm excited to be before you today to give you an update on what we've been, the happenings this last summer. I haven't listed everything, but I just picked some highlights of what's happened since March. The August report, Treasurer's report didn't make it in your packet for this month, we were a little bit behind on our financials, we had an audit and just kind of threw it behind, so by the time I got my report to you, we didn't have that done, so I wanted to make sure and get this to you. We're super excited about our August numbers, Rick can tell you, he sits on our finance and audit, that they haven't been this good up to this point this year, so we're excited to make some leeway or some ground. In August, you'll see, we had an $11,000 positive for the month of August, which at the bottom balances out to about a $47,000 positive for the year. So, definitely, over the last five years, this is our best August that we've had and year-to-date, so we're definitely excited about that. So, I wanted to share with you today some of our successes that we've had. So, we have increased our volunteer hours to 9,241 as of the end of August. That's in comparison last year to about 8,200 hours for the entire year. This is due to a restructuring in our dog walking program. So, what we kept hearing from our volunteers is they wanted more structure, and they wanted the accountability, and they wanted more tools for them to be effective for our organization. So, through a grant that we received, we were able to send Cassie, our volunteer coordinator, down to Pets Alive in Austin, where she spent a week learning about a restructured dog walking program, was able to bring that back to our organization and implement that, and we've seen in the last month, an increase, last two months, an increase in our volunteer hours, which has allowed us to have more of an impact in our community. So, we're super excited about that, I'm excited to see what our numbers will be throughout the end of the year. Last year, that 8,200 hours was equivalent to about four full-time staff positions for us, so definitely has a huge impact for our organization. Second success is we're 191,000 over budget year-to-date for our fundraising. Ninety-six, or 94,000 of that is in-kind revenue, so peanut butter, dog food, cat food, all of those kind of things, but the remainder of that is cash on our fundraising side. So, definitely, with the recruitment of new fundraising staff, we've seen an uptake in that. We are excited to have been notified that we'll be receiving a large gift this year, which will allow us to be able to retire a portion of our line of credit. So, we've had about a $40,000 draw on our line of credit from last year, we haven't had to pull this year, but from last year that we haven't been able to address, and we'll be able to take care of half of that with this gift. We'll be able to help with some cash flow needs, so I'll talk about our challenges on the next slide, but definitely one of our challenges has been cash flow this year and struggling with that. So, this gift will allow us to help with some cash flow needs. We've identified this year that adoption revenue, as we know, is not going to cover our expenses for our organization, and so we have started to explore some different revenue generating ideas for some different businesses that we might start up, and this gift will allow us to have those startup funds to be able to do that. And one of the things that I have been pushing for, for the last five years, is the creation of our endowment. I think that any nonprofit needs that endowment to help them, a recession comes and your fundraising goes down and you're really, really struggling, that endowment can help you. So, with this gift, we'll be able to kick off our endowment, and we'll really use my efforts in the next two years to start recruitment, four gifts to go into that endowment in the future. Our challenges, definitely has been a struggle, Rick can tell you, sitting in those meetings, we've had a lot of hard conversations over the last six months. I push my team to have some really, really uncomfortable conversations about where our organization is going to go. We, our large donor redirected her funds this year. So, as you know, our organization was built from a large donor coming in, and for the last 10 years has subsidized our organization quite a bit, and we've had a walkout plan for the last three years of 100,000, 75,000, and 50,000. This is the last year for the $50,000 contribution, so we have to get creative and we have to look at our organization, if we're going to be here for the next 70 years, like we've been here, we've got to start looking at our organization in a different way. And so, with that, we've definitely had some cash flow challenges this last summer. We have to bring into our organization about 15,000 a week to cover payroll and payables, and so it's definitely a challenge for our staff to continue fundraising at that level. Our adoption revenue and merchandise sales has been lower than budgeted, we're about down $30,000. The last four years, our projected adoption revenue have been right on trend, this year it's down, and it's down because we've had increased strays that have increased medical costs to them. It's really hard to adopt out a dog that has heartworms. It's really hard to have kennel cough go through a shelter and have to put that kennel or that animal into quarantine for 14 days. Length of stay goes up, you don't get as much exposure for that animal, and so we've seen a decrease of about $30,000 in our adoption revenue and merchandise sales. The strays, again, an increase for vet needs, vet expenses has been, we're over about 30,000 in vet expenses for the year due to those strays we're seeing come in. Recruitment retention of staff definitely has been a challenge. When you make 750 an hour, it's definitely hard to retain staff in the working environment that they have. As far as emotionally based, our organization sees a lot of emotional cases, and it's definitely hard to retain and recruit staff. What's ahead for us? Definitely exciting times. Our fundraiser coming up on October 18th is Baumiao. I'm excited to announce that we have 38,000 in sponsorships before we even walked into the event. Two years ago, that's what the event netted. So, I'm super excited, we have a goal of $70,000 for that event, and I think we'll be able to hit that. We're doing something different with the event this year, we're not doing a silent auction, we're doing a donor giving board. So, definitely a different kind of event for our guests, but excited to bring that to our community. We're in the budgeting process right now, I know we presented a budget to you at the beginning of the year, we go back and we relook at that as we have more data and more trends, so we're going back through and relooking at our budget, and we'll be presenting that to our board on November 21st for approval. We are having a van wrap promotion right now. Five years ago, when I got to the organization, we just had that, the white van that traveled around, and we were able, through sponsorships of Pets on the Van, to be able to get that wrapped with our information, so definitely branding and marketing for us starting to peel off after five years, so we're working on redoing that, so we have spots available on that van for people's pets, that will help pay for the van wrap and help with some general contributions. And our last kind of thing that we have going on is, with all of the need for looking at some additional business revenue for our organization, identified a need for a planning and operations committee at our board level. So, currently, we have a finance and audit, and we have a development external relations committee, but looking at different business models, looking at our program revenue and looking at all of that, I really determined that we needed a subcommittee off of our board to look at that, and so we've established that. We had our first meeting last month, we've been able to recruit a lot of local committee members to serve on that, and are excited to see where that's going to go in the future. So, that is just a few things, like I said, Rick can tell you, we've got so much more going on, but I could stay up here for two hours and talk to you about all the amazing things happening out there, but these are just a few of the highlights, so I would stand for any questions that you have at this time.
What was your best fundraiser?
Our biggest fundraiser right now is Baumiao for the year. So far, the birthday party is second. Now, we do have several, what we call third-party events. So, we have a motorcycle event that happens in Miami County that raises about 9,500 for us. We had a reps and rumbles a couple of weekends ago in Aletha, it raised about 4,500 for us. So, we've got a lot of those, what we call third-party events, where volunteers throw all of those, and we kind of show up day-of with some cute puppies and help talk about Prairie Paws.
Like Melissa said, I went on one of, one of the many boards, I'm just on one of them, last January, and I guarantee this lady has a whole lot on her plate, and it's pretty impressive what Melissa and her staff accomplish out there. I think at least four of the Commissioners here was, was up here when, before Melissa came to Prairie Paws, and I think they can all tell you the difference of where we're at now, so she's doing a nice job. And like I said, I go to the board meetings, and trust me, she can overwhelm me with numbers that are out there, so.
Well, definitely, our organization, like I said, has changed over to data-driven, so it's not just kind of guesses, it's all about data and digging in behind those numbers and figuring out trends and where we're going to go. We've been so critical to the community for the last 70 years, and we want to make sure we're here for the next 70, and it's definitely due to partnerships like what we have with Franklin County, and we so appreciate the growth and, and the patience with us over the last five years while we've identified and grown, but just can't tell you enough how we, much we appreciate the expanded partnership and, and sitting on our committees and hearing about what we do and, and the struggles that we have, for sure.
Anyone have any more questions from this? Well, thank you for the update.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, second item on correspondence and organizational business is Kelly Moore to discuss a request from Habitat for Humanities to waive dump fees for a rehab project.
Yeah, hi, I'm Kelly Moore, I'm the Office Manager with Habitat for Humanity of Franklin County, and we're small, but we're mighty and we're still here, and we're starting a rehab project at 610 South Walnut, and I believe it could start today, my knowledge is yesterday afternoon, and we're requesting that the county waive the dump fee, as you have, you know, done in the past, and it could be just one time and may need it for another time in the future, that I don't know. And I know right now that the, what do you call the box roller, I'm not the construction person, thank you, is there, and probably should be hauled off within like five days or so.
You say one time, you're talking about one time, dumping one time or just this one project?
One time within the next week that I know, and maybe again another time, I do not know until they get in there. I know with this, things being, projects being done right now, is, I believe the carpet's going to be pulled out, the hot water tank, I believe the kitchen cabinets, and then once all that is done, someone's going to come in and do mold remediation, because we're not letting any volunteers in there until all of that's taken care of, and then once they get in there and see what needs to be, there might, walls and things could be, start being moved out, I don't know yet.
So, you're, sorry, go ahead.
It'll all come from that address.
Yeah, and it'll all be, yeah, no.
There's only so much weight in the house.
We can only do one, no, no, no.
Okay.
Any questions?
Anyone have any more questions? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve waiving the dump fee for this rehab project at, what did you say?
At 610 South Walnut.
At 610 South Walnut.
Yeah.
Happy to make that motion approved.
Motion's the second?
Second.
Commissioner Stottemeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much, appreciate it. Habitat does, thank you.
Okay, Gary Nicholson with the Ottawa Veterans Day Committee to discuss Veterans Day.
I'm here to ask for donations for the parade committee. Also, I'm here also going to ask for permission to put flags on the courthouse grounds like we did last year. We, you know, the committee keeps trying to find better ways of doing this, there's everybody's volunteers, Ray Schumate's, I think, been doing it for 20 years, and I've been doing it from the very beginning, so it's, it's, it's a well-worth project, we need to remember our veterans and support our veterans. So, that's why I'm here today, is to ask for a donation for the committee.
We gave a thousand last year, wasn't it? Is that right?
At least so.
And you're not requesting any additional money from the transit, or from the tourism, right?
I'm not aware of that request.
Well, the reason I'm bringing that up, we've had some things, and I don't think this is one of them, but we've had some issues where someone came in and requested money from the commission, and then turned around and requested more money from the tourism, so we tried to get to the point where the either, the tourism's taken care of it, or if we give them money.
I will ask Ray about that, I don't recall, recall that.
And I think the flags on the courthouse lawn is not an issue at all, so.
Okay, appreciate that.
Does anyone have any questions on this?
It would come from the Commissioner's budget, not from tourism, right?
That's up to you guys. We did pay it out of tourism last year.
Well, if we go tourism, we already set a standard that we wouldn't go over $700 if we go on tourism.
Well, it doesn't come out of, it won't come out of the tourism budget, it may come out transit guest tax money, but not out of.
Well, I try to be a transit tax, we already set a precedent, a $700 limit on.
Not on the.
So, that was, so that was something set up by the tourism committee, that was their, their policy for the, the process that they use to give funds, that they would not recommend anything to the commission over $750. So, if you guys want to do that, you certainly can, that was a two.
I don't mind doing the request, I just, I just want to get it straight, where it's coming from and what's already been set as a precedent, because I've always voted for it before, so I have no problem, I just want to know where it's coming from.
Yeah, probably come out of the transit guest tax, I would imagine, and it was a thousand last year, you said.
I believe so.
Does anybody have any different thoughts on that? Comfortable with that amount? Look for a motion to approve a $1,000 donation to the Veterans Day Committee for the Veterans Day Parade, and also approve putting flags on the courthouse lawn.
Talk about that motion.
Second.
Motion is second.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, takes us to our fourth item, will be to recognize Brenda May for her many years of service with Franklin County, Joanne.
Is she here today?
She is here today. Thank you Commissioners for this opportunity to recognize one of our long-term employees who has decided to retire. Congratulations. Just a little history, Brenda was hired as a clerk two in the Treasurer's Office in 2002, and then transferred to motor vehicles since, in 2007. In 2013, she was promoted to the clerk three, where she continues to serve today. Considered an honor and a privilege to recognize you today, Brenda, and wish you all the very best. Thank you. That's okay.
(applause)
(inaudible) appreciation.
Can I come and shake my hand?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You didn't have any picture with us, right?
(inaudible). In front of the pork brochure, Howard, real great.
Seventeen years can get you a speech if you want one.
Oh, I'm not very good at this. I do appreciate being able to work with Franklin County all this time, I think it's a real honor to, sorry, a real honor to work in that building, the courthouse, to me, it's just awesome, the history of it, and I do get to work in the morning, and I very rarely go outside unless it's really nice, so I stay in the building all day, I like to walk in the courtroom, and know several of you have gotten your way or whatever, but anyway, it's just been a real joy, challenging, and I, it's really helped me as a person to build confidence and be able to talk. I would never be able to do this in the past when I first started, not very good at it now, but it's better than it was, but anyway, thanks again, everyone, and I'll still be around, I'll see you at the store, wherever. That's why I keep telling everybody, I'll see you at the store.
Thank you Brenda.
Thank you.
There's normally would be a reception here, Brenda's chose to have a reception today down at the courthouse where she's put all these years in. It will be, correct me if I'm wrong, on the thing, Joanna, two to four in the old courthouse in the courtroom, upstairs in the courtroom. Normally, when you go to see Brenda, you probably had to wait, I promise you today, there will be no wait, you can walk right into the reception, so. Anytime between two to four, stop by and have some goodies and visit with Brenda.
It won't cost you anything.
It won't cost you anything.
Exactly.
Thank you Brenda. Okay, it takes us to public comment, you do have some signed up, correct? A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or impending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Vicki Hildebrandt.
You've got the times on.
Please state your name and address for the commission.
Vicki Hildebrandt, 2609 Indiana Terrace in Ottawa, Kansas. I am here, I have talked in the past to Mr. Lee about Iowa Terrace between 68 and 15th Street. This is one of the roads we have to go around to get to 68 Highway. It's closer for a lot of people to go that road instead of going clear over towards Pomona because of Idaho Road, and I understand it's closed and that, but I was told that that one-mile road, they don't maintain one-mile roads. I wish somebody would go and look how bad that road is for us to travel. We have a farm over on Osborne Road at Richter. That road is almost impassable again. They did fix the corner, which I told him was a huge big hole. I don't think anybody has drove that road from 15th to 68 to see how bad it is. I don't know whose district it's in, this needs to be taken care of because I am appalled that they don't maintain it. Somebody else went down and mowed the road like some of the farmers did. It has not been maintained at all since the other road was closed. They did fix that corner, I can't say, and I'm glad they fixed it because it was horrid, and we're talking about a hole that was that deep, and they went in there and put rock and finally got it fixed, but I think somebody needs to go look and find out why they do not maintain this mile road.
Where is it again?
Iowa Terrace between 68 and 15th. So, I don't know whose district that's in.
15th.
Okay, used to be the old Houdaw Road, they used to call it.
Marshall. Okay, all right.
Is that what it, I thought it was Iowa Terrace.
No, 15th through to Marshall.
15th through to Marshall, gotcha.
Yeah, out there it's Marshall.
Yeah, okay, and that's all I got to ask is, you know, instead of us going four miles out of our way, we, it's only a mile across there for, a lot of people have been going through there because there's some big ruts in there, so, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David, could you look into that road and check it?
Are there two people we have left?
You have what?
We had two other people signed up, but they left.
Okay. Well, I guess it takes us to items of business, our first item business, day of consider warning bid for the replacement.
We need to do the consent agenda first.
Who don't we? All right, we're going to back up and do the consent agenda. My bad. Items today on the consent agenda need to be considered and approved are claim vouchers in the amount of $818,972.50. Commission meeting minutes from September the 11th, and commission study session minutes from September the 16th, and that's all I see on the consent agenda if, for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve, second.
Have a motion in second.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes. Okay, now we're going to items of business. I don't see Brandon here, are we going to go ahead with that? Anybody hear from Brandon?
No, I can, I can give him a call if you want to come back to that item.
Don't you?
He's in the building.
Yep. We'll, we'll come back to that, we'll go to item number two, concern approving the execution of a proposal from CFS engineers in the amount of $23,000 for the design and plan preparation of the Iowa Terrace culvert replacement project.
Commissioners, we discussed this at a study session, I believe it was last week or the week before. At that time, we were looking at a, and visiting with the, the engineers, they were recommending a reinforced concrete box at that location. The construction costs, I, I had anticipated about 190,000 during the meeting, I got an email, because I'd asked them to take a closer look at it, they wanted us to use a number of 250,000 as a construction estimate for that concrete box, and so subsequently, after the study session, I went back to them and looked, asked them to look at alternatives. Is there a, another solution that gets us similar results for a lesser cost? And their, their recommendation, their second option is to install two 10-foot diameter con, or excuse me, corrugated steel pipes. That'll be, each one of them will be roughly 80, I think it's 82 feet long, so they're quite long to be able to convey the water through that area, and they'll sit side by side. The construction costs on that are estimated at 150,000, so that's savings of approximately 100,000 for similar results. I did some additional research on the lifespan of these structures, according to a, a study by MoDOT back in 2008, and there's all kinds of conditions that go into these numbers, but they had anticipated a lifespan of approximately 70 years for a concrete box, and as you probably know, we have lots of concrete boxes that are much older than that in, in the county. But, for a steel pipe, we're looking at about 40 years, and those are, you know, depending on the conditions, the soil type, the, you know, the components of the water that flows through there, different, different things will cause the metal to corrode quicker, but still 40 years is a, is quite a long time and should serve us well for the foreseeable future, so my recommendation is to move forward with this project, utilizing Cook, Flat &amp; Strobel to do the engineering work on it, and I would recommend that we go with the, the dual 10-foot corrugated steel pipes. I think that in this case, those will be sufficient and will get us, get that road opened a little quicker. They're anticipating a So my recommendation is to move forward with this project utilizing Cook, Flatt, and Strobel to do the engineering work on it. And I would recommend that we go with the dual 10-foot corrugated steel pipes. I think that in this case, those will be sufficient and will get us, get that road opened a little quicker. They're anticipating about an eight-week timeframe from, you know, start, basically starting today, if you approve the contract, to when we can let the, let the project. So sometime in November is when we would look at beginning construction. And we would use, we would bid this out. We wouldn't do this with our own forces. The, the size of the pipe and the, you know, the depth of the hole that the pipes need to go in would make it problematic for us to do with our own, our own folks. I'm told that years ago, we installed the 10-by-14 squash pipe that's there now, but it was quite a project and took quite a bit of time for us to do that. With everything else that we've got going on, I think it's best that we contract this one out.
Better chance of being pleasantly surprised too by bids on this. There's probably, within our county and the counties surrounding us, at least 20 people who could do this.
Yes.
As opposed to that concrete box culvert, there's one out of Paola.
Yeah, there's not many.
About it, yeah. So.
That, that would be my recommendation, is that the first step in all of this is, is to award the contract or the, the design proposal. And then we can really hone in on, on the construction figures and, and any right-of-way acquisition that we may need to do. Those sorts of things will take place as they get rolling in the design.
David, have you had any experience with these precast concrete culvert pipes or no?
Yeah, that, that is a, there's, there are lots of alternatives out there. The precast is one of them. Commissioner Waymire talked to me about, they use railroad cars as bridges. All of those are solutions. They come with, you know, I'm not quite sure on the, the price structure of those. I haven't researched that in depth. But each one of those situations requires, you know, a structural bridge design. And, and that's what we're, we're looking at here. I, I think that as we go forward, we will definitely be looking at alternatives to, to help with, with these projects. But I think in this case, the solution that they're recommending is, is, will be suitable.
I mentioned to David, there's a, I don't know, from our meetings, there's a company out of Oklahoma, if you remember from some of the KAC meetings. They take old railroad tanker cars and the walls of those are thick, an inch and a half thick, as opposed to galvanized or corrugated pipe, which is, you know, a fraction of an inch, but. Different way to reuse the material.
How long is what's there now? How long is what's there now?
Um, the, the, well, it, it spans the, the width of the creek or the roadbed, so it's 30 or 40 feet.
And you said, how long is this new one?
It's gonna be considerably longer.
That's what I, yeah, that's what I was catching there.
Yeah. And so we will, as a part of that, the, the, part of the reason to make it longer, right now, we've, we've got, the height of that structure is, is considerable and we have to have, oh, the.
Guard rail?
Guard rails, sorry. I lost the word. And with this, we'll be able to have a more gentle slope, which will save us money on the, on the guard rails and it will also be a safer situation. And, and we will build up on the, the head walls. We'll have some material there to help mitigate any erosion issues that we might have and those sorts of things.
Maintain it easier too, mow it.
Yes. Right now, it's, it's, it's very, very difficult, if not impossible.
Well, I do appreciate you reaching out to them, getting an alternative. You know, I, with how many projects that we could be seeing coming down the pike, it is, you know, it's great.
Yeah, no, it, it, it's, it's always good to look at alternatives and, and I appreciate the commission challenging me on that and asking me to, to look further. I, I think we always want, you know, what's best and sometimes it takes a little more research and a little more time to, to get there.
More questions? Remember, today, we're just gonna be approving the proposal for engineers to start on a plan and design for this. So there's no more questions. We'll look for a motion to approve the execution of a proposal from CFS engineers in the amount of $23,000 to design and plan preparation of the Iowa Terrace culvert replacement.
Would you approve? There you go.
Have a motion in a second.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. See Brandon yet?
I just talked to Brandon on the phone. He said he did not know this item was gonna be on the agenda because he didn't get final approval. So if it's okay with you, he'd like to bring it back next week when Derek's here.
Sure. Item number three. Franklin County Board of Commissioners should select a voting delegate and an alternative delegate for the amount, for the annual KWARCC meeting to be held at the Kansas Association Counties Conference on Tuesday, November the 12th. Janet?
Yes, so we've already talked about and elected some other delegates that represent you guys at the, at this meeting, at the KAC meeting. And now we need to elect delegates for the KWARCC conference. So, for their meeting. So I know that you guys had talked about, Roy is your, your delegate for KAC. And I know you guys had talked about him being this delegate also, but that's up to you guys, what you would like to do. We need to appoint a delegate and an alternate delegate.
We already appointed K Camp, your delegate.
I believe you did KAC. I don't know that you didn't.
You got KC, K Camp, and KWARCC.
I, I just do them when they send me the form.
I just wondered if they'd already applied, I mean, asked you for someone.
I have not seen anything. If I haven't brought it to you, I haven't seen it yet. So they send them out in intervals.
Okay.
You should send them all out.
They hold them at the same exact, they hold them at the same exact time anymore.
Okay.
Well, I'll be at the meeting again, so nobody else wants to do it, I'll volunteer to do it.
A motion. Mr. Dunn?
Have an alternate that you would like to make a motion on also?
I'll do it if they, yeah, if you want me to.
Works for me.
That's a motion, I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion I have is Roy Dunn to be your representative, Don Stottemeyer to be your alternate. Okay. Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay. Last item on the agenda today is to consider and approve the neighborhood revitalization properties. Janet?
So on, on your agenda today is the memo that I received on each of these different types of properties from the city of Ottawa, as you can see with the expansion of their program. So it expanded the number of properties that we have in addition to just the housing market improving here in town. So we have, we have nine, nine properties that are new builds for residential, eight that are remodels, and two commercial properties that, according to the paperwork that was turned in to the committee and has been reviewed, will meet the criteria for the program once they are complete. So this is just an approval for, once they've completed and met all the objectives, then they would be entered into the program.
It's a prob, a project that we've been involved in for some time and it's a good project, so.
The remodels, the, it's not the whole amount that is a rebate, it's.
No, the.
The addition in the value.
Yeah, so, so basically how the remodel would work is, so they, we take what the, what the value of the property was prior to, to the remodel and then the new value and we find the difference. And then you get the rebate of 95% for five years on the increase.
Same thing on the new.
Yeah.
New ones, the, of course, prior value would just be the land itself.
Yes, yep.
Anything else on that? Now we'll look for a motion to approve the neighborhood revitalization properties.
I had one question, Rick.
Go ahead.
What's the ninth one? The commercial one?
We have two commercial properties that, that's on the second memo, excuse me, the second memo. We have two remodels and commercial, 120 West Second Street and 401 South Main Street. So.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion to approve the revitalization projects.
Have a motion in a second.
Second.
Motion second, Janet.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay. Takes us to staff reports. Larry, you have anything?
I'm a curious set. Energy, uh, facility for that. Well.
I hear?
Yeah.
Okay.
October 17th.
Bitch. David?
Okay, so the chip seal project is, is completed. We are still working to, to get the striping done. We're hoping that that occurs here in the next few weeks. We're working with the, the contractor on that portion of the project to nail down a time. But the, the chips are down and those roads, 25 miles has been sealed. We were able to go through the city of Richmond, so that is in much better shape than it was prior to this project. Also of note, the above-ground storage tanks for the, the fuel island. We have a new concrete slab and we have two bright, shiny, I believe they're 12,000-gallon tanks that our crews offloaded and sat on the pad late last week. So that part is done and we expect Hoydale to be in late this week, early next week to, they've gotta take our fuel pumps off so that they can then do some saw cutting. We gotta remove the concrete so they can install the underground piping and sumps that have to go apart, be a part of that and, and the electrical work. Once they have that done, they'll reset the pumps and, and get everything working and we'll be able to fill the tanks and, and we'll be in operation. So we expect that that will occur no later than the second week in October. Some of this is weather dependent, but we're anticipating that things will roll right along and we'll be able to be up and running quickly. I think everybody will be relieved whenever that, that date gets here. Work is, if you've been out on Highway 59 south of town, you see a lot of orange barrels and, and cones and that sort of thing. There's a lot of activity. You can really see the magnitude of what we're doing now because they have done, they're almost done with their initial grading. So you can see where the new turning lanes and whatnot are gonna be. It's gonna be a much, much bigger intersection than what we have now. So they're working on that. If all goes well and the, the weather holds off, early next week, they will be milling the shoulders and getting ready to, to start paving that. The, the concrete that will tie into the Kingman Road that, where we left off on the previous project and bringing that to Highway 59. They're about ready to start that. They've got the storm sewer in and the pipes, but the road is so wet with the rain, the base that they have prepared, it's, it's still, still too soggy for them to get their equipment on. So we're waiting on that to dry out before they start laying the concrete there. So things are progressing. They've got, yesterday, we had a brief project meeting and they've got a total of 68 days remaining on their contract to finish all this up. So they have no time to waste and they are working just as hard and fast as they can on that. Also, the Ponty Road Bridge is moving along just fine. The Idaho Road Bridge, just yesterday, we poured the last of the flowable fill up to within 12 inches or so of the top of the asphalt and the bridge deck. We need that to cure for seven to 10 days before we start paving. We've been in contact with Kilo Construction to get on their schedule to come in and do that. We're hoping that if the weather holds off and things happen just right, within three weeks, we'll have that road back open. I know it's been a huge hardship for the residents and the folks that use that road. It, it's, you know, been delayed because of rain and, and other, other circumstances, but we're very close and I'm pretty sure we've saved the counting $100, $150,000 by doing it ourselves. It's probably taken a touch longer, but that, that's a substantial savings and worth the, the extra time. We continue to discover crossroad tubes that need to be replaced. Our, our operators are getting out and, and kinda crawling down and, and looking at these. We've had some that, similar to what happened on the Idaho Road Bridge where the pavement is given away, we've had a couple of blades that, in their blading, in their maintenance, have fallen through voids that we didn't know about. They weren't visible from the surface. And that has led us to discovering these issues with some of these culverts, these crossroad tubes. So we are patching those back together and we will be coming in and replacing those as time allows. We've got a number of them. The, the latest one was on Delaware, Delaware Road, just north of Neosho Terrace. There's one on Georgia between Kingman and Lebette, Riley Road east of Tennessee, and, and then we've got some work to do at the intersection of Nevada and Haskell where that, that crossroad tube is plugged up and it's actually in the wrong spot based on how the water flows today. So we're gonna maneuver that around so it'll be a better situation going.
Are any of those pipes, the scale of the ones we just looked at?
No, no. These are all, all much smaller and, and things that we can handle and handle quickly. I don't believe any of these are special order pipes. These are things that we have on hand that we'll be able to, to take care of. So, and, and those are the types of things that we would ordinarily do. So it's not outside of our comfort zone, if you will. And so we, we've got a, a ton of those that need to be worked on. A lot of them need to be flushed out and so we'll continue working on that as, as we go. Something else that we're doing, we're helping the city of Williamsburg. Met with the mayor yesterday and, and they're gonna start bringing some of their stop signs to us so that we can help them get, get, get them refurbished and, and reset. So we try to help the, the communities when we know of a need and, and communicate. We think that's important because we're all kinda working for the same folks and wanna help each other out. Another important thing that I wanted to mention, Alan's not here, but we submitted just yesterday another impact statement to the Kansas Department of Emergency Management, essentially asking that the FEMA event prior to July 13th, I think that was the end date, we're asking that that be extended because we've had one or two more flood events since that date and, and received a lot more damage. A couple of things that I think are, are interesting that came out in the information that he submitted. We helped put these numbers together along with some other folks. We have, just in this year to date, submitted or created over 2,500 work orders. Our normal on a good year is in the 600 range. And so we've got almost 2,000 more work orders this year than, than what we ordinarily do due to the floods. So there are a lot of things that we are trying to do. We're doing more in an effort to be able to report this stuff. we helped put these numbers together, along with some other folks. We have, just in this year-to-date, submitted or created over twenty-five-hundred work orders. Our normal, on a good year, is in the six-hundred range, and so we've got almost two thousand more work orders this year than what we ordinarily do due to the floods. So there are a lot of things that we are trying to do, we're doing more in an effort to be able to report this stuff properly to FEMA. We are creating more work orders to help facilitate that, so that we can track things better, but it's, there's a lot, there's a lot of things that need to happen. And so I want you and the folks to know that just because we're not working on your road doesn't mean that we're not out taking care of half a dozen other things at any given time. It's just a matter of scope and time and the right weather events to help us get these things done. So we've listed roughly fifty thousand dollars in debris removal from our roads and bridges and whatnot, the corn stalks that wash up on the road, and tree removal, and all of those things. So we think that's about a fifty thousand dollar bill. Right now, we're at, we think we're at one-point-two-five million in roads and other emergency protective measures, setting out barricades, doing the flip signs, regrading roads, and that sort of thing. That includes the work that we've done to date on Idaho Road Bridge and the one that we're getting ready to do on Iowa Terrace. We've tried to incorporate those things into this number, but what this doesn't include is all the man-hours and equipment time and those sorts of things related to these twenty-five-hundred work orders that we've been working on. So I expect that number to go up as we work through these, the documentation for FEMA. I'm hopeful that we will have this fully submitted to FEMA by, or KDEM, actually, by the end of the year. That will be probably the soonest that we'll be able to get that. It's quite a, with our current systems that we have available to us to be able to track this and document this, it's very labor-intensive right now. And so that is just gonna take us quite a bit of time, on top of everything else that we do on a daily basis, to be able to get this, get the hours and everything accounted for in a format that will be acceptable to KDEM. So we, we've got our work cut out for us, but we, you know, we're making progress every day.
Where are we at, talking about new subdivision road requirements?
I have, I have looked into that. I haven't, all I've been doing right so far is looking at what some other folks are doing, but I haven't had the time yet to finalize that.
Just wanna add in on the, something David said about Richmond, that we've chip and sealed their main street. We've been dealing with this for the last couple of years and talking about, that street was in pretty rough shape, and if you've been to Richmond before this was done, from the downtown area going out towards their cemetery, it was very narrow, very bad shape. And when we started talking about doing it, I thought, there's no way a chip and seal is gonna help this street that much. But Richmond hired Kellogg to come in and get the street ready, and I didn't see it before they chip and sealed it, but evidently, they had it in pretty good shape when they got done. And I went over, I looked at, after they chipped and sealed it, and it's amazing, that street now, it's so much better than it was, and what it did for that street, and I know they're very happy with it, so it was a good situation. That street's in pretty good shape now, so. Anyway, we hadn't done that street for several years, they chose to take it over and take care of themselves, and that was a council that's long gone, none of them are even still there. So they come back to the county, wanted the county to go back in and start maintaining that street, and we've been working with them, and a couple of years ago, we started blading the snow and stuff for them off that street, and so that's all worked out pretty good, and I know they're very happy with it, and it definitely improved that street, the chip and seal. And like I said, they brought Kellogg in and had it ready to be done, so it really improved it. Okay, Janet?
Just wanna let you know that I'm gonna be getting the ballots uploaded online, so the citizens can see the city school election ballots, so I do have them in my office if anyone wants to take a look at them. So we got those done last week, so we're moving forward on preparing for the November fifth election, and people can already submit for an advance ballot by mail if they would like to get one, so they can go ahead and submit those forms, and then when we start sending the ballots out, I believe that date's October sixteenth, then we will automatically mail them one when we get those all ready, so.
Takes us to commissioner comments and board reports. Don, you wanna start?
Yeah, just to, I had a couple of calls this week, it's very unusual, thanking us for projects that were completed out on our roads, that they, two people that had problems before, and they personally called me, and I thought that was pretty nice, get a call that they were appreciative, not just, and I ain't gonna say I didn't get one that was the other way, too, but at least I got two that were good, two out of three is a definite plus. I haven't had any really big meetings, spent all my time on the car show the last two weeks, kinda report that to the commissioners, that working with the county emergency management and the city and everybody helped us through this thing, you know, and fortunately, we saved it for the most part. We thought we was even gonna have to cancel the cruise night because of hail issue and wind issues, and we kept, the emergency management worked with us really close and kept us up to date, and we met with them behind the scenes several times, and we was able to survive it and get through. We didn't end up, I believe the final count was thirteen fifty-seven, that is down six to seven hundred, but that's well to be considered with the things that happened and the conditions, and we got a lot of phone calls from people from Oklahoma the last two, three days before, and they didn't come, I mean, you know, down that area. But anyhow, it did go pretty successful. Downtown Saturday night was beautiful, couldn't ask for it to be any better, and I think we salvaged everybody that, nonprofits and so forth, that were, like, a lot of their funds on that night, was able to salvage it, and it did damage, have, not so good for the ones down in the park, but as normal, but it went out pretty good. I'll, we can talk about that later, we got some more to report on that. I did get a email from KDAT, they've approved me to serve on the Middle Meridizine Advisory Council, which Larry serves on, and I got a letter, email from-
Little John?
Is that the lady's name? From KDAT, asked me and said I'd been approved to serve on the advisory council through KDAT, the reports to the state water office on issues and water issues in the Meridizine Basin, so that's all I got this time.
Been to quite a bit since last we met. Notable, went to, of course, the joint luncheon, we were all there, Rex Carswell, there was an appreciation event for him, for all the years he did the, worked on the fireworks for the city of Ottawa. Went to a few planning commission meetings, just been listening to the conversation and presentations on the proposals for renewable energy zoning, so that's been interesting. Of course, that'll come to us anyway, so even if you weren't there, you didn't miss it, but enjoyed listening to the conversation and the information there, so.
It's been two weeks, so I've been to several chamber events. I think the one two weeks ago was to honor Bo Kilo and his hog wild and his contribution to the police foundation and to communities and schools, and then I also attended the one for Rex Carswell, and then the last one was at the Ford dealership to celebrate their anniversary in our community. I've attended a couple of study sessions and commission meetings for the city of Ottawa, and probably most notable on those is maybe going a different direction for the downtown economic development area, and then also the raise of the electric rate at this time at the first of October for nine percent, but anyway, that's all I have.
I went to the ECAN board retreat last Saturday, and we basically just went over the operation with Chris Lannister, who's been there about eight or nine months now as CEO, and just reviewed the whole operation of the ECAN. Went to the car show, had a veterans booth down there at the memorial, and lots of traffic and a lot of participation, and we was just about ready to pull the plug on our booth because of the weather, we didn't know whether to stay or go, and it turned out to be a beautiful night. I just wish the car club or chamber or city would get the PA system to work all the way down Main Street, it doesn't go to Fourth Street or Fifth Street, and I mean, that's, you know, it'd be nice if that worked all the way down to Main Street. It was a good night for our group, and everybody was running out of food and running out of supplies, so that's what you want when you, you know, have a fundraiser, run out of everything you got, so it worked out real nice.
Okay, last Thursday, I attended, pray pause, one of the board meetings, had a full board, a full board FCDC meeting, not yesterday, but the Tuesday before, and attended that. We didn't have a commission meeting that Wednesday, so haven't reported that. Also attended the joint luncheon, and that's all I've been to since the last time we had a meeting. Things coming up, we have a scheduled September the thirtieth, next Monday, we've got a study session scheduled, got a commission meeting on October the second. It's the main things, I see the lady that did KOFO last Thursday, I listened to that, was very good, that might be somebody you wanna put out there on a regular basis, so just think about that, but, oh, that was you on there. That was you, I thought, okay. Anybody have anything else? If not, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Have a motion, got a motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're adjourned.